Good evening, everyone. I will call the Monday, April 12th Board Meeting to Order. Happy to be here in person with all of you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr. Ms. Cruz?
Present.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Hume?
Present.
Mr. Malloy?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Welby?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
Present.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Present.
Nine present. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion.
All second. All in favor? Pardon me. Roll call, please. Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative. Communications to the board, Mrs. Orr.
Yes, executive sessions were held on March 15th, 2021, March 29th, 2021, and this evening to discuss personnel negotiations, real estate, and litigation.
Thank you. Solicitors' report, Mr. Audi?
I have no report this evening.
Superintendent's report, Mrs. McTiernan.
Thank you, Director Gil Martin. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everybody back in person. I just have a couple announcements. I would like to thank everyone who has helped the process of getting our students back into in-person instruction. From our school board members, central level staff, building administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, clerks, maintenance, and all staff, thank you very much. And of course, thank you also to our school community for being patient and understanding throughout this process. It was great seeing our students walk back into our schools. An update on our ESAR funding. Our planning meetings continue weekly regarding the use of our ESAR funds. Our plan is to have an overview to unveil at Dr. Finan's next recovery meeting, which is scheduled for April 28th at 3:00 p.m. And the last item I have is about the 2021-2022 school year. I want to reassure all of our families that our goal is to have all of our students back full-time for the 21-22 school year. I can promise you that we are all working towards that goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. McTiernan. PSBA report, Director Dempsey.
Thank you, President Gil Martin. Just some quick topics regarding ESAR funds. The PDE announced that our state will receive 4.9 billion in federal non-recurring relief funds. 4.5 billion of the funds will actually flow to the school districts and charter schools. And with, of those 4.5 billion dollars, at least 20% of this money is to address learning loss. Schools can use the rest of the funding for food service, professional training, technology purchases, sanitation and cleaning supplies, summer and after-school programs, and mental health supports. Funds must be used by September of 2024. Some interesting information about sub-s shortage that I think is kind of nationwide. House Bill 412 will now allow day-to-day substitutes to serve for more than one educator, as long as each assignment does not last more than 20 days. And they're also eliminating the expiration deadline for substitute to teacher program. So student teachers could actually substitute in districts that was expiring, I believe, as of June, end of June of this year. PA revised their school opening guidelines to align with the CDC and DOH. So happy to hear that we're going to be pushing forward with a five-day return, hopefully, the 21-22 school year. PDE recently announced its accelerated learning initiative. The initiative will ensure that district plans use equitable, trauma-informed approaches while developing their multifaceted approach to developing a system of support so that they can make key decisions going into the 21-22 school year. The PSBA spring advocacy highlighted systemic budget challenges at the districts, broad-based mandate relief and charter school funding reform. They're urging PA constituents, as well as school boards across the state, to send letters to legislators. More than 390 school boards, Scranton is one of them, have adopted PSBA's resolution calling for meaningful charter school reform. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you very much, Director Dempsey. At this time, the board will welcome public comment. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Union officials will be allowed four minutes. As always, I would ask you to maintain a strong sense of decorum. Mrs. Orr?
Yes.
Our first speaker is Vivian Williams.
Good evening, everybody. I woke up last Wednesday fully expecting to pack my last child up to the next school day to go to our homeschool that's been our homeschool for 10 years. By noon, I made the decision that due to extreme regression that my son has experienced, it would be in his best interest to attend a more inclusive environment at Tripp Elementary. Within an hour, I had spoken to his new teacher, while Mr. Milliani couldn't have been more graceful and sensitive to what I had just been asked to decide. I don't think it still hits me, and each morning I wake up and ask if I made the right decision or I acted too quickly, to which I think about that eight-year-old boy whose only voice is me. And what I was able to push for and what building administration made happen while quit a year too late was exactly the decision that needed to be made. What enabled me to act swiftly in my son's situation is the level of communication and trust I have with all those that are part of his team, including the Special Education Department, along with trusting and utilizing the process, as Mr. Barrett, who perfectly spoke to at last special meeting. Trust the process that you all have spent countless hours discussing and analyzing and start putting it into action. To sit in an IEP meeting and hear how far my son has regressed is gut-wrenching because there are numbers and tests to back up how far my son has regressed due to his recent testings of last month. Part of his regression, I believe, is due to the district's inability to act swiftly, as nearly every surrounding district has in-service learning for their most vulnerable students to begin with. While the pandemic has played a part in my son's regression, each one of you have as well. And I encourage you to visit the autistic support class at Tripp Park, where my son now attends to see what reactive actions result in. I want to thank Director Yanni, as I went through the right channels and reached out to Director Malloy, but got no response ahead of my IEP meeting. The PA Department of Education's mission is to ensure that every learner has access to a world-class education system that academically prepares children and adults to succeed as productive citizens, and you are tasked with doing. We are one of the last districts to not be fully in-person, a district that still does not address mental health or learning loss, and whose stakeholders still have no idea how you all, how you are developing the plan to spend millions of dollars in CARE Act funds, along with being in the dark about what recovery supports such as mental health supports are being offered. My last remaining hope that a proactive COVID recovery approach will happen is the creation of the reopening Education Advisory Committee. I encourage you all to have to meet more than just the quarterly requirement and actually listen to them and utilize the expertise that those that are selected tonight bring with them, and listen to their opinions and suggestions as I applaud you for incorporating a number of parent seats in this committee. I have submitted my name for consideration, and if named, I see it as an opportunity to begin bridging the fractured communication and trust that exists between parents and the board admin, while continuing to be a voice for students such as my own. I hope many of you sitting in front of me tonight see the opportunity as well, because I am here to say that we are a broken district. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Next, we have Brandy Solomon.
Hi, good evening. It's been 390-some days, and none of you seem to understand or get what parents, families, and some of our teachers are going through. We email you, we call, we do everything we can to just get you to understand how we are living, how every day is a struggle for us. Two days a week, two days a week, that's all we get. And they're not instructional because you need to be testing kids, as if our kids don't have enough stress on them. You don't get it. And after every meeting, you say, "This has been productive. Let me give myself a pat on the back." You get nothing. You get no pats on the back. You've forgotten the most important thing. You've forgotten our children. And I know because I live in a community where I see my neighbors' children getting in trouble when it could be easily avoided. You threw a spread comes again. Again, you said, "Okay, we're going to bring the kids in," then to find out it's for PSSAs. What more do you want from your community? We've given you everything, and yet we still receive nothing. You didn't have anything set up for these kids, nothing for them to reach out and get help, no hotlines, no nothing. We've had horrible nights. And you want to evaluate teachers? Here's your evaluation. Some of them worked, and then the rest of them carried us to the finish line because some of us couldn't get there on our own. When are you going to stop putting yourselves or whatever else you're doing aside and just pay attention to our kids? Because parents are at home questioning themselves every day. Every day we all see our children, we lose them a little bit more. And you said two days a week for some damn testing. You should be ashamed.
Thank you, Brandy. Next, we have Sagan Suda.
Good afternoon.
I don't think it's on.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Orr. My name is Sagan Suda. I am seven years old and a second-grade student at George Bancroft Elementary. I don't think any of the people who want to close my school have ever been inside during a school day and felt the same caring feelings as we do. Every day began with a warm greeting from my friends and teachers. That feeling continued through each school day. I miss that feeling very much. They want to close my school because of money and needs repairs, and they say we have too many schools. They want to put us in a big school with lots of kids in my class. That would not be good. A lot of my friends speak Spanish, and some need more help than others. Being with more kids would not help any of us. They also keep talking about a big school with a big cafeteria. We are kids. All we want to do is eat and go play outside as quick as possible. We were doing fine before the pandemic. Why is it so important that we change now? We need our community to stay. Our voices are not big enough, and we need you to please listen. We have not been in Bancroft since the pandemic began, and they want to close our school during this. We are already scared enough. Why would they take our school away now? My mom and dad always tell me, "If I know better, I will do better." Can you please do better for us? It's all about the kids, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sagan. Next, we have Lisa Suda.
Honorable Board, my name is Lisa Suda. I'm the Vice President of Bancroft's PTA and a Scranton taxpayer. This evening, I hope to keep this very simple. You are faced with a forced and quick decision to close a school in the middle of a pandemic. We've heard an abundance of creative facts and disinformation to confirm closing our school. Before the pandemic, this was a fully functional school. As with other buildings, the district had a wish list of capital improvements for Bancroft, many of which may come to completion due to the COVID relief money. These issues should not be part of your deliberations at this time. The only essential issue should be the cost associated with airflow. We do not need a roof. There aren't, nor was there ever, open sewers in Bancroft. We want what is just inequitable for our children. Tonight, I suspect we will hear a laundry list of issues preventing Bancroft from reopening. The costs will be inflated, as has everything else the district has said about Bancroft, all in an effort to close our school. Again, virtually any of these issues could be said of any SSD building. The mere fact that the administration has been so creative in picking facts should be a clear indication that there are no just reasons for closing Bancroft. The district should close the admin building before ever considering school closures. Equity demands and fairness calls upon you to make the difficult decision to keep our school and community intact, keep Bancroft open. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Holly Mead.
Before I say what I had typed out to say, that little boy represents the best of the best of public education. So closing Bancroft is just wrong. Good evening. I was happy to be back with all my students today, and I'm happy to be back with all of you. Let's talk about students and teachers and how they are intertwined. I have repeatedly brought to you the concept of hiring quality teacher candidates and retaining the teachers that we have. I have spoke at the board meeting the last six times, and I have, each time, I've highlighted a teacher that is leaving or has left. You recently lost a Special Education Department Chair at Scranton High, a dynamic Dynamo Courtney Blaney that any district would be thrilled to have. The students and the faculty right here loved her, and she loved them right back. I know love is not to be factored into many of your votes, so I'll put it into terms that you can understand. Being the Chair of the Special Education Department at Scranton High means she sat in every high-profile special education case. She literally saved you thousands and thousands of dollars by preventing multiple lawsuits to come in front of all of you. You just lost her, and that is costing the district money. So far, we've had 29 teachers quit during the school year. That's unheard of. Currently, 14 special ed positions are open. Who's servicing all of those students? Do you think that that could cause an increase in lawsuits? I personally think it will. The board is hidden behind the statement that we only vote on policy. We do not make it. I'm not asking you to make it, but by being an elected official, it is your role to shape policy. By being inactive in these contract negotiations, you are losing the best people that we have. By being inactive, you're allowing the students to suffer through countless substitutes and coverages. What have you individually done, individually, to involve yourself in this issue? Dr. Finan, Mrs. McTiernan, Mr. Audi, and most importantly, all nine of you. What have you done to personally solve this contract? I have heard many of you say, "I love our teachers. They work so hard. They should have a contract." Well, it's time to step up and put the money where your mouth is. We have money now. You, each of you, needs to get involved. I'm asking you, as a personal favor, for just one of you to attend one negotiation session. Just one of you step up. I'm stepping up and fighting every day for money for this district. I'm meeting with state legislators and asking them to support the Scranton School District in this huge education equity fight, but sadly, not one of you nine will stand up for us. That's sad. Every child, especially the ones behind me, deserve an outstanding education. And that doesn't happen unless you have outstanding teachers raising the bar to educate them. The voters will be watching to see who gets involved, who digs in, and who solves this. If you step up, you will have lots of support in May. If you don't, you won't have any.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Samantha Corilla.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Corilla, and my son, Jackson, goes to George Bancroft Elementary School. I also went to George Bancroft Elementary School. That school is such a paramount to keeping this community together. I ask you, is this the legacy you want to leave to our children, that you're going to just close their schools because of funding? You've gotten how much money from the government as relief, and you can't put even a portion of that to our students, our kids, the ones that matter. They're the ones that are, we're the ones who are keeping you in jobs, but you can't keep our children in school, in a school where they're not having overwhelming classes, too many people in the classrooms, to where the kids start being completely lost and getting, dropping through the cracks. Do you feel that's fair? Would you want that for your children? I just can't imagine this is what you feel is right because of money, when you've gotten so much from the government to put toward these schools. So I'm asking you to please vote to keep this school open. These kids deserve it. These teachers deserve it. Bancroft has the most amazing teachers. They have created so much of a safe environment for these children. My son was bullied. The first thing he did, he told his teacher. The teachers embraced him. They made sure they protected him. He's not bullied any longer. He has a voice, and his voice is being heard. And that's because of the teachers at Bancroft, because they make sure his voice is heard. So make sure his voice is heard with you and care about our children and keep the school open for our community and for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Next, we have Jackson Corilla.
My name is Jackson Corilla. I am a third grader of Bancroft. I urge you to vote no for closing Bancroft. How many buses will you need to get kids to school? How much money did you get to fix at our schools? But do you want to keep it for yourselves or keep it for us? And also, will you interrupt our sleeping times or interrupt school? And what if there aren't enough seats for buses and schools? And what are you going to do? Put another teacher in another classroom? No, that's not how we want stuff done. At least teachers deserve better. better. I've been bullied, and I've got told to be a leader. Well, now I'm telling you to be a leader of our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Next, we have Rosemary Boland.
Good evening. I don't know if I want to go after that young man, but I would certainly appreciate it if his mom would lend him to me so he could sit in on contract negotiations. I think he'd be an asset to my team. He certainly has a president of union in his blood, I'll say that. You better watch out for that young man. He's great. I have a couple of things I want to echo what Holly said and what some of our students just said. First of all, in your beginning of your meeting tonight, you asked Ms. Rott about contract negotiations, and you know what? I'd like to know about that, too. What about contract negotiations? They were canceled. You have no teachers. You have classes with no teachers in them. You have teachers in the Scranton School District that are teaching the students in front of them. They're teaching students on the computer. They're teaching students that they don't know who they are or where they are because they're not on the class and they're not on the computer. Now, we learned tonight, as you just did, that the teachers, along with those three tasks, are now tasked with giving PSAs. And today, we learned, I learned, that the teachers are going to be doing the other tasks and giving PSAs along the, with the other three tasks. I've heard of the Trinity, but I haven't heard of this. I don't know how that happens. I don't know how that works. And I don't know why it's working. Today, I had a phone call from a state legislator, none of ours, from this area. And he called, and he wanted to know how things were going, so we had a lovely conversation. At the end of that conversation, he said, "Rosemary, I called to ask you if you could come to an event for me to raise some money for my campaign." He said, "But I'm not going to ask you for that." He said, "With all the things you're trying to deal with here in Scranton, Pennsylvania, I can't ask you to give me any kind of money or support like that." So I said, "No, no. You know, give me your name, give me your number and all that, and we'll see what we can do to help out." We have a giant mess on our hands, folks. This isn't anything like the likes of which I thought I'd ever see or hear about in my lifetime in this district. I've covered classes. I've taught 52 kids in a room. I've never had to be the Trinity, never, nor have any of you ever been in that position. To put a teacher into that spot is unbelievable. I can't believe it, that anybody thinks that this is a great idea. It is not a great idea. It isn't. And that the two young men who just spoke are telling you from their perspective what is fact, and they're not kidding, it's fact. Everything I've heard from paraprofessionals, from teachers, how many of our teachers have left this district? Every single day, we don't have somebody covering a class in this district. Teachers have one prep period, if they're lucky, a day. They have not had their preps because they are covering classes because you do not have teachers here. You don't have teachers here because you don't have a contract here. And the working conditions are unbelievable. When, when is this going to penetrate? When? Why are you allowing your team to cancel contract negotiations? Why? These are questions that you, the board, must answer. Not me, not the parents, not these young children. You nine are tasked with answering my questions, and somebody better figure it out before there's a giant lawsuit because of negligent supervision in the classrooms in the Scranton City School District. That's a vitally important thing for you to think about, negligent supervision. That means a class has no teacher in the room. Think about it. That's a huge lawsuit, huge. I cannot defend negligent supervision if my member participates in that. You, as a district, can't defend it. And you've got it happening every single day of the week in this district. As Holly just said, teacher upon teacher, quality teachers are leaving my district that I've loved this district my whole life, worked here my whole life. This is amazing to me that we would get to this position. We've got to fix it, and I only know a few ways to fix it. It's up to you. Let's see what you want to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Next, we have Matt Loftus.
Good evening. I wanted to start by addressing an issue that is of concern to our paraprofessional members. Earlier this year, the paras were furloughed, and they were slowly called back, something I disagreed with at the time, and I still believe was something the district should not have done. The paras played and continue to play a vital role in every classroom in this district, or most classrooms in this district. What's happening now is, as they're being called back, their bids are not being honored, and as a result, we have paraprofessionals going into brand-new jobs that they've never done before, some of which require training that they haven't had. And the SFT did file a grievance on that, and I'm asking that you please address that as quickly as possible to remedy that situation. Number two, I wanted to address the closure of Bancroft Elementary. As a, as a lifelong resident of Scranton and a child who experienced the closure of Jefferson Elementary and was bused to Armstrong, the closure of North, and was bused to South, the closure of Central, and took a bus to West, I can tell you that none of those decisions were good decisions. And decades later, we continue to do the same thing. We continue to look at closing a neighborhood school that's a true treasure to that community and bus students all over the city, and it never works. It never works. I, I was very fortunate. No matter what building I went to, I encountered terrific teachers, and I, I was always welcome. However, I would have liked, in all of those cases, to be in the building in my neighborhood, and we were denied. And, and many times, we were told the building was going to fall into the earth. And today, they're beautiful buildings. I went, probably 35 years after North closed, I went to my daughter's ballet recital there, and it was magnificent. So I, I don't understand that desire, and I think it's wrong. The Bancroft community deserves that school, and it should stay open. I also want to speak briefly against the moving of our fifth grade to the intermediate centers. I think that's a bad decision, and I don't think that environment is age-appropriate for those children. The next thing, the contract. Now is the time. You've heard speakers mention teachers are leaving, paraprofessionals are leaving. It, it's time to get this settled. Please do everything you can to settle the contract. I also want to ask the board to reconsider keeping teachers in schools on Wednesday during deep cleaning and paraprofessionals in schools during that deep cleaning. I, I don't understand why it is impossible for employees to work virtually on that day, and I think it's a risk. Many teachers have expressed concern, many paraprofessionals have expressed concern about the chemicals that are being used. The last thing, I, and I'll very briefly address this. I, I, last week, a flyer went out about the cyber program, and there's a deadline for registration, and it's indicating seats are limited. I'm, I'm hoping that's not correct, and there was an April 23 deadline, and limited seating was noted on the flyer. I, I can't understand why the, the, last year, it seemed like the district limited enrollment at some point in the program. When the program was developed, there were numerous reasons why it was important and, and how it was saving the district money. So I hope somebody would please look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Next, we have Frances Regan.
Good evening. My name is Frances Regan, and I'm a proud member of the SFT Executive Board. I've taught at Bancroft School for the last 31 years. I've spoken before this board numerous times, asking you not to close Bancroft School. I now ask that you table the vote to close Bancroft until you get a final amount it would cost to fix Bancroft. I believe the board owes this to the Bancroft community, to list and provide with documentation issues at Bancroft that need to be repaired before voting on closing it. You've talked about the differences in TRIP and Bancroft, mostly focusing on the cafeteria and gym. You've said that the Bancroft staff would have more technology at TRIP. Once again, not true. Bancroft technology was brought to TRIP from Bancroft, except for the Promethean boards, which your own IT people have told us that ours at Bancroft were better. You have said that the staff has more resources at TRIP. You said that the staff has more resources at TRIP. I have seen no more than I have at Bancroft at TRIP, no more and a less. You seem to think that just because TRIP is new, our students will get a better education. However, you fail to see that a new school does not necessarily mean a better education. This can be proven right here in the Scranton School District. Three schools in the Scranton School District were awarded the National Blue Ribbon of Distinction Award. These are older schools and smaller schools. George Bancroft in 2004, Prescott Elementary in 2007, and Robert Morris in 2018. So there you have it, three of the older, smaller schools in the district achieving academic awards. So I ask you, over and over, why did you choose Bancroft? Your latest response has been capacity. Bancroft has 240 students, and the capacity is 300. All of your schools have less capacity, some even in worse shape than Bancroft. Then you said because Bancroft is in bad shape, but you only had the 2012 feasibility study when you said that. You didn't even put Bancroft in the new study until two weeks ago. So when you chose Bancroft, you didn't even have that information. I surely intend to hear Bancroft needs millions of dollars of repairs from your draft report. But I know other schools need about the same amount, and yet you choose to repair them. So much for equality in Scranton School District. Bancroft is an old school that doesn't have a bright shiny cafeteria or a large new gym, but what it does have is a history of academic growth and success for all of its students. So how this school board votes tonight on Bancroft will show what it values for the students of the Scranton School District. Academic achievement for all are large, bright, shiny buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances.
Next, we have Joan Hoda-Wannitz.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz, Scranton resident and recovering property taxpayer. Last Thursday, I saw an article in the newspaper about the school district's first in-person meeting since the pandemic began. I was surprised, however, to read that anyone who wanted to attend had to register via the internet. Now, I don't have an internet connection in my home, not because I can't afford it, but because I'm very, very cheap. I do, however, check my emails daily at the Scranton Public Library. Therefore, it was no problem for me to register. Then I asked myself, what about other people who, like me, don't have internet access but would have liked to have been here tonight? You know as well as I do that there are a lot of people who, for one reason or another, don't want or can't afford the internet, but who pay property taxes year after year after year. Why weren't they given a phone number to call to register? And why did the Times Tribune article only appear last Thursday with the registration deadline of Friday at 2:00 p.m.? Yes, I know that you reopened registration today, but that doesn't help people with no internet access. Frankly, I think that for some of you, the only thing we, the people, are good for are our votes and our tax dollars. Some of you couldn't care less about our opinions or the welfare of our children. So let me offer this suggestion. If a property owner who pays taxes year after year isn't good enough to be invited to your meeting, then maybe he or she should be exempt from paying taxes to the Scranton School District. At least then, these people would get some bang for their buck. Think about it the next time you advertise a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Next, we have Anthony Stark. We'll move on to Glynis Johns.
Hello, Scranton School Board. Here again, and I just wanted today to speak from the perspective of a former student at Bancroft Elementary School. As some of these fine teachers just said, it's the teachers, honestly, that push the students forward into their realm of excellence, whatever that may be. In 2004, when Bancroft won the Blue Ribbon Award, I was in fifth grade. And that's an achievement that takes years to get. I remember, as a child there, they talked about how big this was for the school and all of these things. For those who don't know what the Blue Ribbon achievement is, it has very specific criteria. And for those who don't know, I got this right off of the website, the Department of Education. It says that at least one-third of the public schools nominated by each date must be schools within a high percentage of students from disadvantaged backgrounds. So I'm going to assume that all of you know what disadvantaged backgrounds mean, and although there are very different definitions of which, I find it strange that we're closing this Blue Ribbon school that has high achievements from disadvantaged backgrounds. The Department of Education goes on to say that this can be defined by students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch, reduced lunch programs, students who are English language learners, migrant students, and students who receive services under Title I for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So all of those things, I qualified for. My time at Bancroft Elementary, now looking back as a grown woman and thinking about all the memories that have shaped me at that school, really did. As a low-income student who lived in the projects and the townhouses, I walked down there with a group of kids whose parents, as a collective, felt safe for us to go there. Most of those students, their parents work nine-to-fives, two jobs, three jobs even, don't have washing machines. They do their laundry right down at T's or in the facilities on the property. So now, if you're not busing these kids, what do they have to do? Parents are already struggling, trying to get their students educated while at home, maybe working from home, or walking to their job and figuring out some other form to get their kids there. I can't imagine growing up, being a child in that school 20 years ago, and having to deal with the same thing that my community, these parents, these students, and these teachers have to go through. It's really upsetting. And one thing I think is even more disgusting is a lot of times, with the conversations that I have with many of the people in the community, some of you up there, you guys are always so astounded by the things that I do in the community, how proud you are for me to stand up for these kids. And there are so many kids at Bancroft Elementary School that are no different than me at all. And that's the striking point. So don't call me successful. Don't call me a shining, bright star, because now you're crushing all of them. You're knocking them right out of the sky. You're giving them more disadvantages than helping them. And I'll tell you right now-- And I'll tell you right now, it was from a handful of teachers, it was from the perseverance of myself and my family that got me to the success. And one last thing I want to point out, which I've said before in front of you all a few other times, the lack of support for education is damaging these kids. And I know firsthand, because I almost achieved three degrees without the help and the support of the school board. To the point where some of the faculty here told me I wouldn't be able to achieve anything more than a community college education. Now look at me, I run a nonprofit that supports way more students than what you guys seem to do right now. And again, I'm not here to trash talk all of you guys, I'm just here to pressure you to make a better decision and help those kids that are just like me. I was a sub in this school district and I go back into the projects and they're like, wow, Ms. Jay, you live, your neighbors with me, you live here? How's that? Because anything is possible. You can do whatever you want. It doesn't matter if you're low-income, that doesn't change your mind, that doesn't change your potential, it does not change how smart you were. But you have the ability to create access and not take it away. So I'm really hoping that you guys do something for my community, my neighborhood, my, my friends. I hope you make a decision that puts them at an advantage during a pandemic. And so that's all I want to say today, and I hope that you guys do more for this community. Oh, last thing, now as a nonprofit and a soon-to-be opening a community center here and purchasing property, I now see how much we pay in property taxes. It is honestly insane. So I'm standing here with more of a footing here, because I have also contributed personally to the school district. So make the right decision for all of us, and especially the black and brown kids who didn't live a life like you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Glennis.
Next we have Suzanne Fury.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The only word that comes to my mind is obstacles. Hopefully you'll listen to some obstacles. To the real reason we are here is to teach our children. First of all, I came in here and had to get a temperature check. And in just a short time, the high school students will be returning, but they won't have to get that temperature check or any kind of a health check. I, that astounds me, just astounds me. So we, one of our maintenance staff retired in December at Armstrong. His job has never been filled, so during the pandemic, we are short one maintenance member. I really don't understand that. So here are obstacles. We started our day today at Armstrong with no heat, as we usually do on Mondays. Then, my room was 86 degrees. And it went up and down all day. So I have six and seven-year-olds in my room with masks on with that issue. We've been approved for years for a new ventilation system. And honestly, we haven't been in school with students in 13 months. I wish someone could explain why our ventilation system has not been replaced. We have two companies in our building almost every day who are trying to get a system that does not work properly to work. I can only imagine how much money they have, are paid to be in our building every single day. They're trying to fix a broken system. Why is it not replaced? Equally alarming are the 36 industrial-sized dehumidifiers that were placed outside my door last week. Why are they there? They're brand new. That's scary. We have no ventilation in our cold lunchroom, so it can't be used, which means the cold lunchroom tables are now in the gym. Our whole gym is covered with lunch tables. So that means our children, who are finally back to school, can't have gym in the, and it, I, I'm astounded. The tables have to be folded and moved, we only have one maintenance person during the day, and that's an issue. Exercise and movement, our children need so desperately. And our physical education teacher, Marsha Johnson, is going above and beyond. She's teaching in the hallway. Can you imagine having a gym class in the hallway? She's outside, she's got virtual, live, she's outside my door in the hallway. Something's wrong. So I'll tell you today, obstacles. For the last two weeks, I've had a child get sick and vomit in my classroom. Sorry to be so graphic. And on those particular days, we don't have a related arts. So we are in from 8:10 in the morning till 12:20, four hours and 10 minutes. So I had to help that poor child. And I couldn't even wash my hands, because I have no running water. So I would like you to ask yourself how you would feel if you're helping to clean, someone's vomit, you can't wash your hands, there's no water. I could go on, there's, there's so many things, I'll have to put it in an email. But we, we've got alert, we've got allergy training, we're told not to have food in the classroom, and that food allergens can be transmitted with hand sanitizer being used, because soap and water needs to be used. We have so many children with allergies, so yet we're serving food in the classroom. That's our training, but we don't follow our own training. We have so many obstacles, ventilation, not enough teachers, no, I, I could go on and on. We, we just have, it has to be better. It has to be better for these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Next we have Matt Barrett.
Good evening, and thank you for your service to Scranton School District. It's good to be back in Scranton High. On a positive note, I know the great things that could happen in the Scranton School District. I have four daughters that have graduated from Scranton High. My son, for the first time today, stepped in Scranton High as a freshman. First time, April 12th. And it only works if you bring kids to school. We hear about the greatness of our district is the diversity. Well, my son doesn't experience diversity sitting at home. You create the diversity, you create the environment here, and that has not happened this year. And Superintendent McTiernan said, thank you for being patient and understanding. I am neither patient nor understanding. And I think this board has been way too patient and way too understanding. To put in perspective, Abington Heights High School, eight miles away, Mr. Audi is their solicitor. Some of you live in the district. The Abington Heights Mock Trial Team is the state champion this year. The Scranton Heights Mock Trial Team was not allowed to participate. Same COVID, same crisis, same county, same substantial spread. That's the difference. Those kids now will have opportunities that our kids do not. And that is shocking, and it's going on continuously. This board voted on February 8th to return students to school. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors in the Scranton School District will not return. If they return, I'm hopeful, next Monday, more than two months after you voted. You have been way too patient and way too understanding. Now, with regards to building reconfiguration, well, on the ESSER funds, a couple of things. Number one, some districts have already announced their plans, so I think we're anxious to see what the plans are. But also, last year, in Dr. Finan's strategy, building reconfiguration strategy that was put out last March, it says that district's current administration does not have the capacity to oversee tens of millions of dollars in annual construction projects. Do you have the capacity currently? You have tens of millions of dollars to invest. Does your current administration have that capacity? And if so, what changed? With regards to business, or building reconfiguration, I, I really don't know, you know, I'm sympathetic just to Bancroft. I don't know if you should close Bancroft or not, but I'm not so certain that you know whether or not you should close Bancroft or not. In the recovery plan, it specifically provided that there is going to be a building reconfiguration advisory committee. And it talked about how it's imperative, imperative, that this committee be formed to get broad input from the community, that there would be public meetings, and this would move towards the development of a final reconfiguration plan. Is there a final reconfiguration plan in the Scranton School District currently? If so, where is it? Who served on the committee? Last March, in the strategy plan that was put out, it talked about steps to determine how to close which buildings. Did that happen? If so, did it happen in public? Who determined it? I think at the last meeting, I thought Dr. Finan said, I will never tell you which building you should close. In the recovery plan, it says, however, the CRO shall have final approval of the specifics of reconfiguration. The last time I spoke to you virtually, I said, your processes are failing you. Can you blame the public for not knowing what the reasoning is behind the closure of Bancroft? Has there been a reconfiguration plan that's been put forth, that's been vetted, that's involved public, broad public input? Has that all happened? Have you all had the benefit of that? I just ask you to go back and look at the recovery, the recovery plan, I believe it's on page 103. It outlines the policy and the process for making reconfiguration or for determinations. If we followed it, I look forward to finding out where it is. If we haven't, I suggest you go back and follow that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Next we have Laura Christensen.
I just have to say, thank you for all the speakers that've been before me, you guys did a great job. I have to say that, just before I start. Okay, hello, Scranton School Board. Okay. Hello, my name is Laura Christensen. I'm a teacher in the district, teaching third grade at Bancroft TRIP Elementary. Jackson's teacher. I'm a mother of twin boys who graduated with honors in 2020 from Scranton High School. And I'm a taxpayer of Scranton and a proud member of SFT. I feel that we should save our schools. Bancroft is a small school that is vital to our community. Our students, 90% are low socioeconomic status and need to get extra help earlier in the elementary grades. Bancroft's growth and academic skills is better than most of our district's schools. Smaller class sizes now helps with graduation rates later. We need to focus on our students' needs. Why close this school when down the street, the lace factory will be completing more housing in the Bancroft element, or community? During a pandemic, we're moving students to a bigger school. Why? Also, busing is going to be done this year, but next year Bancroft students might be losing that, because they'll, they'll be under the busing policy of 1.5 miles. Students will need to walk the intersection under the bridge of the Scranton Expressway to get to TRIP. This is a dangerous intersection for students to be walking to TRIP. Our students did not put us into debt. It was years of previous administrations' mismanagement of funds. When the state appointed Dr. Finan, I thought that she would investigate and follow the money trail. Our district is giving hefty raises to individuals. As a taxpayer, what corporation gives a 50% raise? Even a 20% raise is way too much, when you give teachers less than a percent a raise. Are you kidding me? There are no raises for teachers, though. Shame on the district for having no money, but still give raises to the administration these last few years. We found out during the pandemic that it's our teachers who are the essential workers. The current administration and school board should put the students' interests first, with the 7, $57 million coming into the Scranton School District. Other districts are getting $5 million. We are getting $57 million. I'll give you some suggestions to do with that money. Instead of closing our schools, let's close the administration building. We could lease it to the Lackawanna College, and if they don't want to pay for it, go to many law firms that would jump at it for a number of years, so we can keep it if we get solvent. We shouldn't be giving our assets away anyway. I mean, you gave Central away for $250,000. Are you crazy? And that's not even, you guys do a mistake. The next thing is the fair contract for teachers, nurses, clerks, and paraprofessionals. During the pandemic year, 29 teachers left. Why? Four years of not having a contract. We wonder why they're leaving. And then you want more diversity in your teachers? Think again. I'm one of the teachers that are on the bump step for the past four years. Thank you for your attention. I hope you do what's right for our student body and for our school district.
Thank you, Laura.
Our last speaker is Margie Holmes.
Good evening. My name is Margie Holmes, and I'm a city taxpayer, proud SFT member, and a third-grade Bancroft teacher who rents a classroom at Isaac TRIP. I am also honored to say that I have taught all of the wonderful students who have spoke today. Just a few years ago, I had Glennis in fifth grade, we're not going to say how long, but I was also Sagan's kindergarten teacher. I had Jackson in my enrichment I-time group in kindergarten, and I have the privilege of having him again in third grade. I am here to urge you to vote no to closing Bancroft School, or at least to table to postpone it until all factual and financial information is known. I would also like you to reevaluate the safety conditions and concerns of our students, teachers, and staff. I want to thank Directors Yanni Dempsey and McCandrew for your insightful questions. Inquiring about student safety and management of our district's assets makes sense. I would also like to thank Director McCandrew for showing up yesterday and showing your support and standing up for Bancroft. I hope this mindset continues. Equity is a word that I have been hearing a lot about in the last recent months. Where is the equity for our students? Where is the fairness to either of the Bancroft or Isaac TRIP student population? Believe me, I wholeheartedly appreciate all of the support, kindness, and understanding the ITE staff has given us as we've been uprooted and thrown into their space. But how is it fair that Bancroft and the TRIP teachers who lost their classrooms were limited in packing all of what they need to be successful in the classroom? Mind you, we were only given a two-day notice before we were to report back into the building. How does "take what you need to get by" justify meeting the needs of our students? Where is the equity in changing the reason why we are closing a school without proper information and costs when the district is receiving money from the government to remediate? Where is the equity to get rid of our assets when we continue to spend thousands of dollars each year to rent space to house our students? How is it fair to the students who depend on Bancroft community to close their school when other buildings in the district have similar concerns remain open? How is it fair to flush the pipes and put new filters in some schools and not in Bancroft? Where is the equity when you, Director Gilmartin and Dr. Finan, admitted to seeing a cone in the middle of the basement floor back in 2019, and just walked out of the building and did nothing about it, until now, when you are grasping for reasons to close our school? So how do we trust you to be making the best decisions for our students and school, when you not have done them in the past? I.e., lead, mold, and asbestos? Even though TRIP is newer and bigger, it doesn't mean what goes on is better. Hundreds of studies have found that students who attend small schools outperform those in larger schools, on every academic measure, from grades to test scores. So how is it fair to either the Bancroft or ITE students to increase their classroom sizes? My classroom at Bancroft was bigger, it had closets for storage, it was bigger windows for air ventilation, it had a newer Promethean board and a better Wi-Fi connection. Where is the equity in keeping our students safe? They receive transportation currently, but where is the equity in taking it away next year? Where is the equity in transporting our students during pandemic on buses? They ride on crowded buses instead of walking to their neighborhood school. Why isn't the SSD taking temperature checks and limiting the number of students on a bus like other districts in our area? Where is the equity to our students and teachers when tonight, I had to take my temperature and it was checked, and they also are capping this meeting at 25% occupancy? Are you telling the public that your safety is more important than their child's safety? Where is the equity to the taxpayers to keep raising our taxes for the next Where is the equity to the taxpayers to keep raising our taxes for the next five years when the public knows we are in this financial crisis due to past corruption? Where is the equity of taking away the libraries, preschools, and limiting the related arts to our students? Where is the equity to the teachers and paraprofessionals who lost their jobs and who will lose their jobs with future closing of buildings when administration keeps receiving their raises? So for this board to truly show equity, then your vote needs to be "not close Bancroft." Thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you very much, everyone. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 8, 2021, and March 1, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call on the question. Pardon me. On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Under Budget and Finance B7, we will have a motion to approve the life insurance contract with the standard at an annual premium of $200,947.50 or 25 cents rate per $1,000 of coverage and a three-year rate guarantee. The financial impact, as I said, is $200,947.50. This is a $70,733.52 reduction from the renewal proposed by the previous carryout. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
I apologize. I need one moment to get back to my other screen here. Got it now. Sorry. B8. We will have a motion to approve the sale of the 2020 delinquent real estate taxes to municipal revenue services, approximately 95.5% of qualified tax claims per the attached offer and resolution. The financial impact is $5.2 million. Fund received, fees not to exceed $250,000. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
B9. We will have a motion for a real estate assessment reduction for the following properties based on the attached summary of information. Scran LLC, North Washington Group, North Main Avenue Baptist Church, Scranton Transload. The financial impact, the estimated revenue loss per the attached, of $78,770. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
No.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
No.
Seven affirmative, two negative. Motion passes.
B10. We will have a motion to approve the asset's disposal per the attached. It is a variety of textbooks and technical equipment that we reviewed in our packets. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
I'm sorry. This is not opening the same way it did before. Pardon me. There we go. B12. We will have a motion to authorize the solicitor to pursue tax assessment appeals where either the board of assessment or interested party reduces or seeks a reduction in current assessment of 15% or greater. Be it further resolved that the solicitor is hereby authorized to take all action necessary to resolve and finalize stipulations and court orders when court-imposed timelines necessitate finalization in between regularly scheduled legislative public meetings of the board of school directors. All such agreements shall be presented to the board at the next available legislative public meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
On the question?
On the question? Could I just have a little bit more clarification with that? That is, just to ensure that we take the right legal action in a timely manner?
That's correct. What happens is a lot of times deadlines are imposed by courts or by tax assessment boards before we have an opportunity to take it to a board meeting. So we find ourselves in a position where we can't really respond appropriately. And it's become a problem. So we've decided to try to address it by at least allowing us to take that action pending final board approval so we could at least have some authorization to tell court or to tell an assessment board that we tentatively approve or deny that position.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
B13. We will have a motion to approve, to authorize the procurement of an appraiser to appraise and assess the value of the Scranton School District administrative building. We authorize district personnel to seek quotes and to procure an appraiser of the Scranton School District administrative building. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Yes, President Gil Martin, we are moving forward with this. Could you please explain why we are moving forward with seeking this market appraisal at this moment?
Are you asking me or are you asking a solicitor?
Well, I couldn't give the explanation, but I was asking you.
Or would you like to... Are you asking yourself? Because you can go right ahead. I know the answer, too, but please.
I feel like it's a Cheryl Fonce moment. The reason for seeking the appraisal at this time is that we hear very often, and people perhaps don't understand, that it is also included within the recovery plan, the eventual disposition of the administration building. And it's often presented to the board as an either-or. Why don't we sell the administration building before we do this or before we do that? The reconfiguration plan is a thing of many parts. It is a plan that will come together further and further. But it is undeniable that at one point in time, the administration building will no longer serve the purpose that it does at the moment. It's therefore, and the decision has been taken, to get a fair market appraisal of the value of the administration building at this time in order to be ready, in a better position, to proceed when the ultimate disposition of the administration building, that decision is made.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I know it's part of the reconfiguration plan for admin building to be sold, and we're taking, you know, trying to get it appraised. But do we do this for other buildings like Bancroft? Like, have we gotten appraisals? Like, why are we starting with admin now? I'm happy we're doing it, but, you know, have we done this with other buildings that we potentially were looking at closing? Or is this the first?
No, I think we would at the time of sale, which is not something that we are considering for Bancroft at this time. I think that we realize that there may be other uses for the administration building. It may be attractive to some of the other entities in our community. So this is a bit of information that we will have as we pursue those options. And I think knowing the value of the building puts us in a good position, whether it is an eventual sale or perhaps a rental agreement with another entity. That just gives us some information to make our plans. Dr. Finan, is that a fair assessment of the situation?
Yes, it is. And I think we've talked about mothballing buildings. And this particular building, the administration building, would not be one that we would mothball. It has other services and uses. So I think getting a fair market value is a wise move at this point. And in most areas, it is a virus market, so.
Thank you.
A good option for us at this time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I have something on the question. It was just recently brought to my attention that before we could even consider putting the administration building for sale, that we would need to digitize the records in administration. So is that something that we could add to this to at least get a cost or a process of what would be involved in doing that?
Should we be adding that to this motion? Or is that something we want to discuss at upcoming operations?
I'm just wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse here. Because if we can't even consider selling the administration building until we find out what the process would be and how much it would cost to digitize records, then I would think that would be the first step. Find out what we would need to do. Because if that's not possible, and we're not going to... That's going to happen or take years to happen, then maybe we should do that first before we get the sale.
I'm not sure that they're as distinctly merged as propositions, Director Yanni, as that. I think that we can quite simply get a... We can certainly get a quote for digitizing records. But my belief strongly is that it should be a separate motion. I don't know whether tonight we wish to add under "new business" adding that. But I do believe they should be separate motions. Because the fair market value of the building is not going to change whether or not the records are digitized or not. The only thing that that might affect might be timing of the eventual disposition of the building. So if I can happily move a motion under "new business" that we get a quote for the digitizing of the records? If that would be suitable to you?
I think since this is not an urgent matter, I personally would prefer if we put this on the work session agenda rather than adding something under "new business" so that we have some time to review it and discuss it and, you know, perhaps even be able to bring some information forward for discussion at that time. But I think that's a great idea.
Perhaps if we add that to the work agenda for next month, we can start looking at that. But I do think they're very, very closely linked but separate issues.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Anybody else? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
We will be moving on to education. But am I correct that Mr. Fizil is available to us this evening by phone?
He is with us now.
He is with us?
Mr. Fizil?
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I think I just ended him. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
I apologize.
Do you want to sit, stay?
Jenny, I think we've all navigated our technology reasonably well this evening, so.
I ended instead of hitting the volume up. I figured it was time. Mr. Fizil?
Yes.
I apologize.
No problem at all. I'm present and alert. Thank you for accommodating me.
Can that microphone get a little closer? Would that help?
Could you hear me now? I just said thank you very much for accommodating me. I'm present and alert.
Thank you, Mr. Fizil. It's Katie. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, I can, Director Gil Martin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us this evening. You've provided an interim report focused on Bancroft to my colleagues and myself. Can you walk us through that a bit, please?
But perhaps...
Yes, so thank you. So when we were asked to expedite Bancroft, you know, my team sort of looked at me a little crooked. And I said, "Well, we're going to use this as an opportunity, number one, to help them again." But more importantly than that, it's an opportunity to let you see a draft portion of the report and the format and get a feel for whether we're on target with the format. So I trust that, you know, the format is acceptable in terms of the writing portion of Bancroft, the way we presented that, and certainly the capitalist format. I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance. So we use that as kind of a positive. So with that said, to answer your question, what we did, of course, is prepared our, you know, our written portion. But I'm going to focus on two documents that were, I think, emailed to the board and that you may have in front of you. And the first one is...
Can I just stop you for a minute, Mr. Fizil? I just, I don't know if the public even knows what's going on here. So these were left here for us when we came out of our meeting. I think we need to explain what's going on, right? I don't think the public even knows what he's talking about.
And they were shared with us in our packets for our review. So he is going to discuss...
This was in our packet?
Yes.
Yes, they were.
Okay, well, then I missed this. So I walked out here, and this was sitting here. So I didn't see this in my packet.
It was in the weekly packet.
Okay, so we got that on Friday, correct?
Yes.
Did this come Friday?
Yes.
Okay, so this came Friday, and I absolutely missed it. So this is the first time I'm seeing this.
And President Gil Martin?
Yes.
Perhaps it might be for the public and also that to introduce our guest and where he is from and the process that led up to this.
Thank you, Director Hume. That would be a nice thing to do. This is Mr. Arif Fizil from Dewey Engineering on the telephone. I apologize, everyone. That slipped my mind. Thank you, Director Hume.
And this was the facilities report at our work session two weeks ago. It was pointed out that Bancroft School had not been included in the facilities study. Dewey Engineering, who have been appointed to serve the district, have gone in and done a facility study similar to, identical to, the facility studies that they are doing on every single one of the buildings. This is not information that comes from the board. This is not information that comes from Dr. Finan. This is not information that comes from Superintendent McTernan. This is totally objective information that has been prepared by Dewey Engineering exactly the same way as they will prepare it for other district buildings so that we have a basis for the work that will need to be done, in this case at Bancroft Elementary School. In future cases, when we get the full facilities report on every single one of our buildings in order to make them habitable, whole, perfect for education, whatever needs to be done. These are not things that are in any way coming from the board or Dr. Finan. They came to us on Friday from an objective engineering firm retained specifically for this purpose.
Okay. So thank you for that background. And just to reinforce that, I'll add a little more, a couple more pieces. And I apologize that I'm not there in person to, to explain this. But we were very fortunate to be selected and entrusted by the Scranton School District to provide owners' representative services, but more importantly, to help with the implementation of a capital plan for the upgrading of the facilities. And the first step in that is the assessment of each and every building. And that's what we're in the process of doing. For some reason Bancroft, we were told initially to not include, but then we were asked approximately 10 days ago to get it done. And so we got it done. So that's what I was saying. We gave you this, we used this as a sample to confirm the format that we were going to provide. We provide these capital assessments for multiple school districts to compare one that's as large or perhaps larger than yours would be the Beth La Mary School District. And the real purpose of this assessment that we do is to help you prioritize the capital needs, not only individually within the building, but collectively as a whole, district-wide. What it also does is allows you to assess what strategies and what you need to do at each facility in the long term, as Dr. Director Hume just said. So the whole process is, number one, prioritization of the capital needs, prioritization of the individual building renovations, and then collectively, how do you capitalize and integrate those projects into projects that can, you can pursue reimbursement through PlanCon if it opens up again. That's the Department of Education's reimbursement mechanism. You can pursue grants and other opportunities that you've already started to do and have had some success with. So all of these reasons is why this overall assessment was being done by the district. So with that background, I'm just gonna take now and focus on the documents for Bancroft. Is that okay, Director Gilmoreton now?
Yes.
Can I go into that? Did that help? I apologize. We probably should have framed that out better.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, so now focusing on Bancroft, and again, I apologize that these documents were only sent to you on Friday. But as you saw, we were under the gun and we got them done to try to give you the information that you had requested. So the first sheet that you're seeing, hopefully you can see this, it's a two-page sheet. And it really prints out better in landscape mode and it fits really good on a 11 by 17 sheet. So it's a lot of information. But if you see on the top left, it says building. And then right under it, it would say George Bancroft Elementary School. And the first item is replace steam heating boilers. So that's the sheet I'm referring to. If you have, I'm sure as, as the board, you have a lot of paper in front of you. But that's one of the ones that I would like you to look at. So does everyone have that one in front of them, Director Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, good. So if you look at that, what we do is we prioritize each item within the building. And I just wanna walk, walk you through that because this will help a little bit to make you understand what the content is. And those columns that you see, that would be like a separate one-hour lecture we could have on the logic matrix. But essentially, the first column is safety, okay? There's columns, everything from community, involvement, educational impact, physical condition, et cetera. So that's what those parameters are. And they get plugged into a logic matrix, which helps develop the column that says priorities. So that priority comes out of the logic matrix. So what that does is help create a little more objectivity to deciding what projects should get done first. And we're doing this, if you can imagine, in your district across 22 buildings, multiple items. And so we can then sort the data, database and pull out all the eights, or all the sevens, or whatever you want. We can also sort it by what we call the category, which is the last item. So we could sort out all of the HV projects. HV stands for HVAC. Why would you do something like that? Well, you've had very good success getting some R cap funds. The S R funds perhaps might be applicable to HVAC. There's various reasons you may wanna prioritize. So we can now sort out all the HVAC projects for you, district-wide, and pull those together. The other reason to do that is things like paving or floor carpeting. They may never get to the high priority of a roof or a boiler. But at some point, we need to do those. So we might say, listen, let's assign annually a certain dollar amount. And within that dollar amount, let's go fix the athletic field. Let's go fix the paving. Let's go fix the, the carpeting, the flooring materials. So that's why we're doing that. So that's just a brief explanation. The bottom line is, as anticipated, you know, this building, George Bancroft, is old. And I said that before. You have buildings that have tremendous civic presence. And I mean that wholeheartedly. There's so many of your buildings that when you look at them, they are just, they give you pride. And they give you that civic presence that I call. And they have good bones and good structure to them. And if you notice, there's very few items, actually none on Bancroft, that are structural or, you know, failure-related. However, the problem has been, and I think everybody knows this, majority of your buildings, all of the systems are at the end of their useful life. They have failed, they're failing, they have failed, and they need to be replaced. And that's just pretty obvious. But this list kind of itemizes it. And when you itemize all of it, it comes to a, a large sum. It comes to $7.5 million on the second page. And that, you know, at first glance, that seems like a lot. But when you think about all of these systems that have to be put in place, and when we put this whole plan together, you're gonna see what the replacement value is of your facilities. And when you start putting that in perspective, you're going to realize and you see what other people are spending and what it costs to get these systems up to speed. It is still a good number because your buildings still have good bones and are not failing structurally or in any other way. This building, for example, you've already put a new roof on about eight or nine years ago. So the roof is okay. So there's some good things. But the list of things that need to be done are extensive. Now, to help you and to help us understand it a little better, I put this other sheet together because I wanted to make sure that this is looked at in the right perspective in terms of, you know, what the cost means relative to the use of the building and what your intended purposes are for the building. So we put another sheet, Director Gilmore, that has three columns. And it has George Bancroft is the first column. And then it has Francis Willard, and then John Adams. So if everyone could have that sheet in front of them. It's a single-page sheet. And it may be hard to read again because there's a lot of information. And I'm not going to go through it all. But I wanted to just kind of put it in perspective. So do we have that sheet in front of me? And can you still hear me? I apologize.
Yes.
Check it.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right. So if you look at the first col, row, it says year built. And the year built is 1928 for Bancroft, tremendous. Willard is 1928, and Adams is 1931. And so they're almost the same vintage. And what's interesting is when you go up to them and if you blindfolded somebody and you took them to one of the wall elevations and said, where am I? You probably would get it wrong, you know? Because they look very similar. So that's why I wanted to compare them. If you even look, they even all had a renovation done in 1960, approximately. So they all have a renovation done about that time. Now here's what, some of the information that I wanted you to be aware of, okay? The next thing is the building's square footage. Bancroft is 36,000, Willard is 52, you know, almost double. And Adams is almost the same size as Bancroft. Now you can see the building description. They're solid buildings, you know, concrete, steel frame, et cetera. The site acreage is important to note. Bancroft is the smallest in terms of site available, only .74 acres, okay? Very small. The parking is another thing to note. There's no on-street, off-street parking. It's only on-street. Whereas the other two buildings have between 15 and 18 parking spaces. Now the next few rows are what I just wanna point out and have you take note. The number of classrooms is 16 at one, Bancroft. Willard is 26 and Adams is 17. So you can see the, the classrooms. But this is the one that is most important for you to be aware of. So we can spend seven and a half million dollars fixing the systems. But I can't give you more classrooms unless I put in addition. And I can't fix the core space limitations. Core spaces are things like, that are listed, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, library, music art. I listed just four. And we also sent you floor plans. So you could kind of look at them if you haven't seen the building. And when you put the floor plans and look at them adjacent to each other, you know, the, the issues are really the, is, are the core spaces at Bancroft adequate? You know, it's not for me to say, but a typical new elementary school you would build, even if it's only for 300 kids. I mean, you probably wouldn't build one for 300. You'd probably go closer to 500. Because the core spaces have to be built regardless of whether you're doing 300 or 500. And the core spaces that you would build would be triple, if not four times, the sizes that you see at Bancroft. Okay? Now you go to Willard, and they're much bigger. They're double the size. And you go to Adams, and they're also double the size of Bancroft. So that was just information that you need to have. Because from a programmatic standpoint, and that's one of the things that you're gonna have to assess educationally with the, with the, you know, educators' format and your specifications. And you guys are very good at that. I mean, that's, you're better than us at that. Is to recognize when we start putting $7.4 million or whatever money we put into these buildings, and you're gonna have similar costs, I'm gonna tell you, at Willard and Adams. So if you're expecting us to come back with a list that's much less at Willard and Adams, it's probably not going to be. There're gonna be some variances. And I'll, I'll show you where a few of them are. But they're gonna be significant numbers. So I wanted you to see that. And the educational program with the spaces is a component that you need to factor in as we begin to implement capital projects and renovations, to bring these buildings up so they can last another 30 to 50 years. Right? So that's something we're gonna have to do. Are we putting an addition on? Are we, you know, gonna try to convert more classrooms into these core spaces, which is what has been tried to, which is what's been done at Bancroft in some cases? And, and that's really, I think, the majority of summary. I don't necessarily wanna go through the building system. They all have ADA challenges, all these buildings. And at some point, we're gonna have to address them, depending how we keep them. There are some issues at Bancroft when it gets into electrical and HVAC systems. And I could go into those if anybody really wants to. But needless to say, the electrical systems at Bancroft, I mean, most of you know, you know, you have, typical homes might have 100 amp to a 200 amp service. Well, Bancroft, that's what it's got. It's got a 200 amp electrical service. You know, so I mean, the bottom line is infrastructure, all these buildings need it, some more than others. But I wanted you to understand some of these other parameters. And I hope that's helpful as I know you have a very difficult decision that you're trying to consider. So hopefully that was helpful. I, I don't know if that was enough background, Director Gilmore, or if you need more.
No, I, I think that was very helpful. I, I think you, you know, make it very clear that there are similarities in our buildings. We will absolutely face similar costs in other structures. But I, I do think that focus on the core spaces is, at least for me, something that, that keeps playing on my mind. You know, I, we are, there is a big investment required across our district. And I don't know that it's realistic that we'll be able to do those things 18 times over. So, you know, when we, when we talk about capacity in buildings and, and reconfiguring, I, I'm hearing a, a well-reasoned, you know, the, the emotional community impact aside, I'm hearing a well-reasoned approach to understanding why Bancroft maybe can't be brought to the places a Willard or an Adams may be able to come. I, I would be interested though, and I, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but I'm sure something they would all like to know. I mean, when we, when we talk about that larger investment, I think the question comes to mind, what would it take to get us back into this building for a short period of time?
Okay. So that's a great question. So we recently have just gone through a very rigorous, you know, ventilation, 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 right? That's the new word. For, for, for the past year, it's all ventilation. So the unfortunate part is George Bancroft has unit ventilators that have, that are failed essentially and need to be replaced. So you're going to have to replace equipment as quickly as possible and electrical associated with it to just get the ventilation and, and heating system working. There are unit ventilators up against each wall. Those are those box-looking things. And, you know, we're gonna have to replace those essentially. You can't really go through fixing those at this point. So that has to be done. Now, the only reason I keep mentioning the word unit ventilator, if you were renovating this building to last another 25 years, we would probably not recommend you put unit ventilators in there. And in fact, if you look at the capital plan list, which was the first page we looked at, it says there, provide, the second line says provide new heating, ventilating, air conditioning, and dehumidification system, including replacement of classroom unit ventilators and boilers. Complete HVAC renovation to the tune of 2 million. So obviously, we would not want to start doing that if it's a short-term solution. So what I'm concerned about is if we're going to do this project on the short term, you're going to invest some significant dollars that you're probably gonna want to then replace again. So that's one of the biggest things we have to address. So essentially, going in to do the repairs is not as simple as some of the other buildings. We're gonna have to do some new equipment, new unit ventilators here in this case, to get the building, you know, functional. And the other problem is, we've already looked into this with Scranton Electric. Because this was one of the ones that was part of the initial, you know, look fee and for the ventilation study. And these parts are not gonna be ready available till we design, put this out for bid, get bid, award it, get procurement. This can't be done for this summer. So that is not possible to get these unit ventilators up and running at this point.
And what do you think a realistic timeline would be? Because certainly, these students are, they're, they've been made to feel-
I think-
Welcome and accommodated, I know. But they are technically displaced at this time.
Yes. I think if you authorize this in May, we'd have a good chance, you know, the building's vacant, we have a good chance of getting them up and running by January. Because it, the, the problem is the delivery of this equipment. From the time you order it, you know, you might be looking at four months in terms of these things being fabricated and delivered from the time that the factory gets an order. And we can't just give the factory an order. We have to go through a procurement process and a design and a bidding process. Right? So, and you guys have just seen that on these other projects. Most recently, you know, it just unfortunately takes time.
Thank you.
Arif?
Was Director McCandrick gonna say something?
Sorry, sorry.
Director Hume can go first.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, you're good.
Thank you. I noticed in this document that we have 300 students at Bancroft, we have 550 at Willard, and we have 400 at John Adams. So it's not the actual student number. All of our buildings are well below capacity except for Prescott at the moment. But no matter what we do to George Bancroft, even where we put the money in, we would never be able to put, to enlarge the footprint to have more than 300 students there due to the small size of the acreage. Whereas when we're talking about Willard, which has 550, and Adams, which has the capacity for 400. So no matter, it would seem to me that we would be renovating a building, my initial thing was that it's about $30,000 per student to, to do that. But we would never be able to have more than 300 there. Whereas Adams could take 400 and Willard could take 550. Now I know we're never gonna fill them totally to capacity. but we would never be able to have more than, uh, three hundred there. Whereas Adams could take four hundred and Willard could take five fifty. Now, I know we're never gonna fill them totally to capacity, but proportionally, um, certainly Willard and Adams would be able to accept more students. Am I right?
Well, that's absolutely right, but, you know, and that's one of the things that's very important to remember. You could probably find somewhere to tack on more classrooms too, but the problem is the core space. So you're right on target, but your core space is gonna limit you at some point. And as you well pointed out, Bancroft doesn't give you room to expand that building.
Yeah, we, we only have half an acre of free space and that, at the moment, I think is serving as playground. It's the, I think Willard has one point two acres and Adams has point nine three, and this is point seven four. So speaking, as any mathematician would throw me out of class, but it's, the Adams block is twenty percent larger and the, um, Willard block is forty to forty-five percent larger. And don't fire me, any maths teacher in the audience.
It's, it's very well pointed out. And really, I think if you had a minute, I know these were in your packet, but if you just take the floor plans of Adams and you take the floor plan of Bancroft just side by side and flip from each floor level, the basement level, um, to each level, and you just look at the colored spaces and the size of the spaces, I mean, you're going to just see, you know, a difference of available core space and the ability to expand if you needed to. So, I mean, that, I think it's, you know, we put the colored floor plans on purpose. I wanted you to be able to see that because the reality is dollars, you're going to, I mean, the, the good example I give you is, you know, in, in my home school district, that's what happened, they have Liberty High School, just like some magnificent buildings of yours. And what I'm telling you is, the, the history of Liberty High School and what have you, it, it's not the dollars, but when you go, they could have spent twice as much, they would spend twice as much as building a new building to renovate. But when you go in Liberty High School, you walk around and you look at the size of those spaces and auditoriums and the gym, and the way they were designed, their spaces are magnificent. They comply with today's standards. You know, they exceed today's standards in terms of the space allocation. And that is very true at your high school. Not your new one, but, uh, West Grant High School. That's true of that, that's true of many of your other buildings. But the issue with, um, you know, Bancroft is these core spaces have been made out of a classroom and out of a basement next to the boiler room, you know, which was probably a storage room. You know, so you've got a cafeteria there. So we have to fix those if we're going to use these buildings for the next twenty-five years. We, we have to fix them, right? Or you have to tell us that it doesn't matter. And then that's fine too, but you're gonna have to make that decision.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Does that help?
Very much. Thank you.
Uh, so when we went to the, uh, the visit of Bancroft with the paper and a few directors, um, we were shown these univents. Um, they were taken apart and we were shown that the control panels on the right side were replaced by some company, I believe, or, can stop me if I'm wrong, everybody, but they're ruined. Um, and that's what's causing us not to be able to go back in the school. And this is a big lift of this, uh, this cost. So do we have any update? Can somebody explain what's going on? But can we explain to the public what we saw when we did the tour? You know, how the coils were ruined because of, you know, that replacement of, you know, the control panel that fried the coils? Um, that work that was done within the last few years? That's why they're not working from what I was, my understanding of why, when I was in the, on the tour.
That's what Mr. Newell indicated, I think. Sean, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
He indicated that there was a company that replaced the control panel just a couple of years ago? And it fried every, everyone of these units?
I'm not sure that we can speak to that without those representatives here. I don't know that Mr. Fazil can touch on that. I, I don't.
Well, the only thing I could say, Director Gil Martin, is you're absolutely right. That is not, I'm not privy to that work. And I know there's many issues related to that, uh, district-wide. But, um, you know, the honest, the, the problem is, right now, those, all I know is, our assessment is the unit ventilators need to be replaced. Um, I can't address what happened, uh, you know, before. And I know you guys are aware of some of those issues and are addressing them in some other fashion. But, um, at this point, those unit ventilators would need to be, uh, replaced, um, to get them operational for, for, for the classrooms.
I, I'm not aware of those other issues. I mean, I, I don't know what happened. Is it anything that can be disclosed?
No.
There's issues, there's issues that have occurred that we, um, really can't discuss publicly at this point 'cause there's potential litigation.
Okay.
Mr. Fazil, this is Director Dempsey. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I apologize.
It's, it's Michelle Dempsey. Director Dempsey.
Director Dempsey, yep, okay.
Do you have a legend available that would help define the prior, the acronyms that you're using for the priority and the category?
Yes, because that'll be part of the final report. But if you want, we can get that email to you tomorrow, um, with that. But, you know, essentially, like I said, the logic matrix is the proprietary matrix. I can definitely tell you what they stand for, but we're not gonna be able to give you the actual, um, logic matrix formulas per se. Um, but the categories are very easy. HVAC, HV stands for HVAC, ES stands for emergency, uh, power, emergency surprise. UN is an uncategorized, P is plumbing, of course. Um, SA is fire alarm system, um, you know, so on and so forth. Uh, intercom is IC, IC is the intercom system, et cetera. CO is concrete. But yeah, we can definitely get you that list, Director Dempsey, to interpret that. But again, as I said, this was us expediting this portion, so it's not been put together in a comprehensive format of a report that you're going to get shortly for the district. And then you'll have everything. But if you'd like that in advance, we can definitely, uh, send that to you. I'm not sure it's gonna help you a whole lot because without me explaining it and going through it, it's gonna be, um, I don't think that'll be that helpful to you.
No, that's understood.
Anything.
Thank you, Mr. Fazil.
I'm just being, just being honest with you. So, you know, we can send it to you if you want. I'll get that to Mr. Doherty tomorrow and he can, uh, forward it to you.
No, um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but, um, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the pending vote to either our next general meeting or to a special meeting. Um, we were given this on Friday, but again, not understanding, not having the finalized report, not really being confident that this went through the proper process with the Building Reconfiguration Committee. I just, I feel like at this time, it, it's not appropriate to vote on this and, and we just need more information. So I would like to make that motion to postpone the pending vote.
And I'd like to second it. And I, I'd like to take it a step further in that I requested this information. On January sixth, I started requesting it. And I requested it five more times, even asking for an operations committee meeting to discuss this in detail. And then I was told two weeks ago that there was no way I was gonna get this information. Um, and now, at our last meeting, I was told, okay, now you're gonna get it. And it is on me that I missed it on Friday. But I can't have things thrown at me last minute. I think I've said that in the past. I, I wanna be responsible to the taxpayer and I wanna make the right decision. But I can't do that if you don't give me the data to do it.
Director Yanni, though, I, I am surprised because Director Hume, did we not receive an email during the week asking when we would see this information from Director Yanni?
Yes.
I'm surprised that when you missed it in your packet, you didn't follow up on that.
I, I did ask, yes, if we were gonna be getting it. So I, I went through the packet, there were two packets, and I missed it. It was at the end. That's on me. But I, like I'm saying, I, I started asking on January sixth. I asked again on January twentieth, March sixteenth, March eighteenth, March twenty-fifth. And now I got it Friday. So I, I did have a busy weekend, so I, I missed it. But I just don't think getting it on a Friday to make a decision of this magnitude is appropriate.
I, I did call you to discuss it, Director Yanni.
I, I also did.
I did call you and ask you to call me to discuss it and...
Motion on the floor.
Yes.
Correct. I, I also think Mr. Fazil feels like he was rushed. And he said it multiple times that this is exped, you know, expedited report. So, I mean, I would like to ask him, how long, like normally, do you look into a building? And how long does it take for a building to get one of these reports? 'Cause I, I mean, he said multiple times that this is, you know, kinda rushed and, you know, you had ten days to do it. So I'm just kinda wondering how long they normally take.
Is that question, I apologize, there was a lot of noise, Dr., uh, Director Gil Martin. Is that a question for me? Was there a question for me? I apologize.
Yes, I believe Mr. McCandrick would like to know how long a report of this nature would ordinarily take.
Okay, so what I was telling you is, so we've issued this report just as one of the directors just said, now, what, what do these abbreviations mean? So you don't have the whole report. But I can tell you, the list for, you know, Bancroft is, is ninety-five, ninety-nine percent, you know, accurate at this point. And the only reason we put draft is because as we go through the different buildings and we might see something similar, you know, or different than what we saw here, that we're putting the cost estimates together. As you can imagine, there's a lot of effort put into these things. Um, but I can tell you that the list that I have given you is fairly accurate and comprehensive. I don't in any way anticipate major changes to this list. But the reason I put draft is for the reasons that you've just said, like, what does that mean? You know, might I change? One of the priorities might get adjusted when we look at the other buildings. And that's why I even did the comparison for Adams, Bancroft and Willard. That's really not typically part of our report. But because we were doing this, um, as a partial kind of, you know, information to you as requested, um, that's why. But I, I can tell you, it's not that we're going to, um, have to need more time. I mean, this is a thirty-six thousand square foot building. We do these pretty regularly. I mean, it's a very small building, um, to evaluate, um, from the assessment we're doing, uh, which is a capital improvement assessment. So I don't have any qualms with the information you have. And that's why it's considered draft. What I meant by us expediting it is we had to pull this thing out of our stream of trying to put everything together and pull it out and give it to you. And that's what I did to try to help get you what you've asked for. And again, I apologize for the last minute that you got it on Friday. But we were not, um, you know, trying to do anything to not comply with your request. So this is when we were asked and we did the best we could. So, um, I just, for the record, we're not, um, we're trying to do the best we can for you. And I, I don't, um, I don't want any misunderstanding that we didn't comply with our schedule.
Yeah, that's my question.
No, no, that certainly was not the case. I mean, you, this was thrown at you in a very last-minute fashion and you, you certainly did everything to get the information required. I, I think part of the problem here is that the conversation keeps shifting. Reducing the footprint and utilizing capacity is part of the recovery plan. And now it is turning into a discussion of the financials of improving this building. And I mean, that's challenging for any of us to keep up with. So I appreciate your participating in this process and, and bringing forward as much information as you did in such a quick and efficient way. Mr. Fazil, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
I'd like to say, Mr. Fazil, thank you. This is Tara Yanni. I appreciate your work. And I, I didn't mean that you didn't do it quickly enough. I think it was just that you weren't asked to do it until a later date. In, in speaking to what you just said, Katie, about the recovery plan, um, my concern here is that if you look at page one oh three of the recovery plan, we, we list McNichols Plaza, and then we list Adams, and then we list Charles Sumner, um, as schools to look at to close. So I think the question goes back to, we are really deviating from this recovery plan in looking at Bancroft. And then we compared Willard and Adams. And I'm not sure why we compared those, I'm not, where did that come in? Why are we comparing Willard and Adams with Bancroft here instead of McNichols, Sumner? The admin building is also listed. Why weren't they compared to Bancroft if we're making the, the complete switch from this recovery plan that we're supposed to be following?
But I also, Director Yanni, perhaps you wanna speak to the Building Reconfiguration Advisory Report here?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, for those of you who are, who were not on the board in two thousand nineteen, the Building Reconfiguration and Building Advisory Committee was the committee that visited all the schools, toured all the schools. It began with a, um, a massive tour. We looked at every issue. Um, just remember that Dewey and Associates were not, um, in our, they were not our owner's rep, they were not part of it. We did tour with Mr. Newell and with Guzik and Associates at the time. Every building was looked at. That committee grew into and is currently part of the Advisory Committee, the Financial Advisory Committee. I gave you a summary in your Friday packet of how it all began. Um, for those of you who were, were there and were part of that, you remember all of those steps. If you recall, in January, we had the formal presentation on the Building Reconfiguration. Uh, the reason why, um, Mr. Fazil and his group had to kind of rush this is in, in between hiring him as, hiring his company as an owner's rep and hiring the company to do a feasibility study. We also had completed a ventilation plan. And then we asked, how can we get some of our buildings up to the, um, to improve the airflow so we could get students back in? If you recall, all of this has happened from January, February and March. And so the work that Mr. Fazil is talking about for the feasibility study was a little bit delayed because we spent a lot, his company spent a lot of time working on the, the ventilation plan. But make, make no mistake about it, the Reconfiguration Committee and Building Advisory Committee began back in the fall of, of two thousand nineteen, had many discussions. And I, I kind of summarized those for you in your board packet. That committee has grown into a much larger Financial Recovery Advisory Committee. And we're just all part of that committee. Because this is not an easy answer. And, um, I thought it was very simple. I thought the McNichols, everything that you see on page one oh three came from the previous work that was done prior to my arrival in your school district. That work was done by a, um, a firm that came in to look at what was, um, what the buildings were at the time and available and which ones needed some work. At that time, these were the areas that were looked at to actually, for example, close McNichols and move the administration in that, in that particular area. When the Building Reconfiguration Committee visited the schools, it was decided, there's too much space here. This does not make sense to take all of that space at McNichols and use it for the administration building. So all of those, there were decisions made along the way. It's very hard as a board, when you come on the board, when things have been in process. But believe me, nothing has been done without thorough discussion. And for those of you who have attended, and I believe Ms. Hume has attended every single meeting that we've had, she would be able to recap this for you. But those, Whittier Annex, for example, that is something that we talked about and why we need to close that. When we had the issue with Northeast Intermediate School and the asbestos, that Building Advisory Committee, as part of the Financial Recovery Plan, talked about, what do we wanna do with Northeast? Do we close it? Do we keep it open? If we do keep it open, do we keep up, open both sides? It was a clear message that we wanted to keep a footprint of an intermediate school in that section of the city. Yes, we were going to keep it open, the investment was made, as you know. Second part of that was, if we are going to reconfigure, and again, it isn't, the money, the financial part was never part of this. It was about reducing the footprint. And as part of that was to improve program along the way. We talked about, and it's captured in this, in this, um, recovery plan, a STEM program. That STEM program would be part of the intermediate schools. And as part of that, it was talked about to bring, um, fifth grade into the intermediate schools. That was all talked about, all discussed when we talked about Northeast. And whether or not we wanted to, um, open the older section, that nineteen oh four section of Northeast. or not we wanted to open the older section, that nineteen oh four section of Northeast. The direction was, yes, and that's why we're going out to bid to mitigate the asbestos in that older part and to improve the ventilation. All of this has been a step-by-step process. No one's hidden anything. It has all been discussed. Perhaps you weren't at the meeting, maybe you don't remember, but it's all been discussed. It is your choice, but I will tell you that you need to reduce your footprint. You have excess capacity in buildings. You need to reduce your footprint because you cannot afford to put every single dollar that is going to be necessary. As, as you will see, when the feasibility study is completed, you just heard Mr. Fizell say, it's not going to be a surprise that you won't see the same types of numbers for all the buildings. You don't have enough money to do that. Remember, you are still three hundred million dollars in debt. Yes, the U.S.R. funds are wonderful. We are very fortunate that the, that the federal government has allowed us those kinds of funds. There are ways that we need to use those, we need to improve the academics. The fifty-six million dollars is not going to get you out of three hundred million dollars of debt, and it is not going to get every single building up to where it needs to be. When you have excess capacity in your buildings and you need to reduce your footprint, that means you consolidate with some of the buildings that are worthy of consolidation. And so, you're right, Director Yanni, these are listed here, but that's not what the committee decided as we went through. And so what has moved forward are, was in January, Whittier Annex, which actually was never really a school to you, but closing Whittier Annex, and that is one that we pay our rent on, and that was another recovery initiative to reduce paying rent for facilities, make better use of our facilities, and then to, to look at some of the schools. One of the issues was, how can we move a community to another community so we don't have to separate students? And so that was a very thorough discussion of one of our meetings. And that was, actually, it came down to Bancroft. And Bancroft has, as you heard, many systems that need replacing. I'm not saying it is more or less expensive. What is the problem? When you don't have core facilities for students, you can only expand a few more students, if expansion is even allowed. You don't have a big footprint there. When you have other buildings that have a footprint. What was decided in, in all of those committees was to keep neighborhood schools in parts of the city. It didn't say every neighborhood school, but to keep neighborhood schools in every part of the city, and to keep your three intermediate schools in your three sections of the city. And just like initially, of course, there's always a, an examination, can you have one high school? Because one high school would save you a lot of operational dollars. You can't have one high school because you don't have enough footprint here to expand this building to accommodate all the students that you need to from west. So a lot of discussion has gone on. I don't want anyone walking away here tonight thinking that some two or three people made this decision. That is not true, and it has been in process since two thousand nineteen. So what you have before you tonight was well-vetted, well-discussed, and all that you, all that was asked for was, could we know what the numbers are of, of what the cost would be? And that's why you had this. And yes, it did come last minute. It did. But I think you can see that it's pretty, pretty detailed and pretty easy to understand. It's going to cost money when you start to upgrade your systems. But that was never the decision. It was always about, it's the smallest school, it can be moved as a community, they can maintain their community sense in a different spot. And as I believe it was Ms. Johns this night, tonight, said, teachers, teachers make that building. Teachers will always make the difference in a school, always. They make the difference. But if you can do that and save some, utilize your footprint, reduce your footprint, utilize your facilities better, so you have more operational dollars that you can work with, so you can get those good contracts, so you can get those items that should be in schools, you need to do that. And that's the initiative. It is not about taking somebody's school away, it is not about losing their identity, it's about keeping that identity and sending it to one building, and so they can be part of that identity. That is, that was always the part of the decision that was made. For those of you who sat on that committee, I hope I described it well, but I know we spent a lot of hours on it, and I just wanted to add that. Because I think it, there's an impression that this hasn't been discussed enough. I can tell you, it's two and a half years in the making.
Thank you.
Can I just, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Finan. Can I just add to that, that having been a member of that committee prior to coming onto the board, I initially was on that committee as a community member and then transitioned to the board, to a representative of the board when Mrs. Dixon left. I can remember sitting in that seat down there, the very first meeting that Dr. Finan attended, and that was in August twenty nineteen, and that was the meeting at which the recovery plan was, I think, voted in. I think it was that meeting. And I remember the first time I saw Dr. Finan and realized that, that this was someone who cared about children as well as dollars, was when she was sitting in that chair and a group of children from Bancroft came up to talk about, don't close our school, and Dr. Finan got up and held the microphone for them so they could talk. By August twenty nineteen, Bancroft had become part of the conversation. And yes, we can look back at the recovery plan and look at the three schools that were named there, but the fact was that the community, the committee, the reconfiguration committee worked as it was intended to do. I was part of the discussions. We went and saw every school. We realized that there were issues with pretty many, most, all of our schools, that if we, that I think we were all, when we get the full facilities report, find quite a strong sticker shock, I have a feeling. But it was very clear that, as Dr. Finan says, McNichols Plaza was a candidate for closure on paper, when it was looked at, when it was realized that we had already closed a school in that area and sent kids to TRIP, we sent kids the other way. That to close McNichols Plaza as well was going to impose an enormous strain on that part of the community. It was looked at in this part of the community, we're within close proximity, I'm not sure of the exact mileage, but I would say three miles between the most, that would be the farthest distance. We have Prescott, we have Adams, we have Bancroft, and we have Robert Morris. They are all strong community schools. Every community has a passionate connection with their school, but we have four relatively small elementary schools within a small geographic footprint. By, to say that Bancroft has suddenly been plucked out of the air is to forget that we were discussing the closure of Bancroft in August twenty nineteen. I wish, I wish that we had enough money to do everything that everybody wants, but we have excess capacity, we have no money, we have S.A.'s money, which we can use as a, as a way of bringing forward the well-being of every single student in this district. We have over nine thousand students in this district, and that money has to be spent incredibly carefully to make sure that the equity of benefit for every student is there. I think that to imply, as one of our speakers did tonight, that we did not follow the recovery plan in establishing the facilities reorganization committee is to perhaps not be as familiar with the history of how we did it as it did. But I second Dr. Finan. We have talked about every school, every community, we have tried to balance the needs of every community school, of every community, to come up with the fact. I do not think that this is the final step in the reconfiguration plan. I think that we are going to have to look at finding other ways as well to consolidate and to reduce the outlay that we have on our, to make sense of our excess capacity and to find the best way we can to build for the future of every single student in this district. And I do feel that it is perhaps unfair to say that Bancroft was selected for any reason other than it is a three hundred student school, where similar schools are four hundred and five hundred and fifty students, where the location is in a group of four small elementary schools fairly close together. And I think that impugning the work and the care and the consideration and the deliberation that went into the proposal that's before us tonight is, is perhaps a tad unfair. Yes, we have now got figures that show what it would cost to restore Bancroft to a, to a building that would still lack the core spaces, but it's not about the money. It's not about, well, let's just spend this seven and a half million or whatever, let's spend down even to category six, this four or five million dollars, and fix up that building. That will not solve the basic problem that we have in this district, which is, we have the capacity to educate nearly thirteen thousand students, we do not have that many students, we do not have the money to keep open every building we have.
Thank you, Director Hume. Mr. Eddy, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and that is appropriate.
That's correct.
We have not, okay.
Yes.
So is there anything else on the question of this motion to, motion to table the pending motion, correct?
I'd like to just say one more thing. I, I really have invested in reading this recovery plan, and I, I've listened to Dr. Finan, and I've listened to Director Hume, and I know that, that both of you want to do what is right for this district and what is right for the students. I'm not implying in any way that we randomly selected Bancroft. But what I'm having a problem with is, the recovery plan also says that because decisions about the consolidation and use of school buildings are controversial, it is imperative for the district to conduct this process in an open and transparent fashion. It goes on to say that they will take input from local business, community, and municipal government. And then it says, the advisory meeting shall present the issues and options involved in determining the use of district buildings and allow for public comment and discussion. I think in reading this, I was looking for the committee, and I, and I know that you run that committee, Dr. Finan, but I spoke to another gentleman on this committee, and he's been on it since inception, and he implied to me that he had nothing to do with selecting Bancroft. So I think this would be an easier decision for me if it came from committee members other than a director and you as our CRO. So I think what I was looking for was for this committee to give input, the community to give input, and them, and the community to recommend to the school, to the board, this is what we want to do. I don't, I don't feel that it went through the proper process to determine Bancroft. And I will tell you that I work full-time, so a three o'clock meeting isn't always doable for me. I do try to listen while I'm working, and I hope my employer doesn't hear that, but I can't always do a three o'clock meeting to follow all of this. I try.
We, did we not have a public meeting? Did we not have a public meeting?
We, we let the public speak, yes, but did we respond? We didn't answer their questions. We had a public hearing.
Well, I, I feel that I prepared, I think I, in all honesty, I took a note, I went through every email.
As did I, and that's what I emailed to you, Director Hume. And that's what I'm saying, is we never had that public comment and discussion, we never talked about it as a public. We never went back and forth.
Did I not send you back? Did I not answer every question you've got?
You answered mine, but you didn't answer the public. That's my point.
That document was, every question the public asked, every question the public asked, to the best of the ability of the administration, of the, of the CRO, of the board, as by me, as the operations committee of the board, was answered in the best, I, I combed every email to find every question that had been asked.
I'm not saying you didn't do a good job with that.
But that was released to the public. It was, the questions were definitely answered.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there anything else on the question for the motion to postpone the motion?
Yes, I have a point of, possible point of procedure, at least. What the, the motion to postpone, essentially, as I understand it, would then be basically a motion to table D two.
Yeah.
Well, D two has a lot more in it than just Bancroft. So perhaps from a procedural standpoint, we should talk about maybe a friendly amendment to remove the Bancroft portion of it, as opposed to, I mean, there's four or five bullet points here that don't even mention the word Bancroft. So I just think from a procedural standpoint, we, we need to do this differently.
So our option would be for Director Dempsey to withdraw her motion?
And then we do a friendly amendment to the original motion?
John?
If a friendly amendment is going to be entertained, yes.
But it, we have a motion and a second on the floor to, in what Jimmy is saying.
Well, we can't, yeah, that's right.
That has to happen first.
If, we have two choices. Motion could be withdrawn, and you can ask for a friendly amendment, or we could vote and the entire D two would be tabled.
Do we have a date to which you wish to table it, Director Dempsey? Or does that give us the time at that time, or do we call a special meeting?
So if I withdraw the motion, the, Jim, your proposal, Director, Director Millau, your proposal is to then modify the current motion, D two with a friendly amendment removing the permanent closure of Bancroft Elementary from that motion? Is that, am I understanding that correctly before?
That's, to me, that seems to be the, the more proper way to do this, because then we could still vote on the non-Bancroft portions of D two.
The other issues on that motion.
Which, some of which seem fairly essential to what's going on right now.
Understood. If that's the course of action, if that's, if that's what we'll do, then I will remove my motion to postpone the vote on D two, and I will make the friendly amendment to, oh, sorry.
We'll do that once we read the motion, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Hold your horses, please. Okay, so the motion is withdrawn, and we will move to D two. We will have a motion to approve the building reconfiguration plan presented on January fifth, twenty twenty-one, which includes the following. Permanently close Bancroft Elementary at the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Starting in the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, implement the following. Grade K through four Bancroft Elementary students would attend Isaac Trip. Move Whittier Annex grade four students to the Whittier main building. Grade five students from Armstrong, Adams, Bancroft, Robert Morris, Prescott, and Whittier, based on address, would attend Northeast Scranton Intermediate School. Grade five students from Kennedy, McNichols Plaza, and Whittier, based on address, would attend South Scranton Intermediate School. May I have a motion?
Some of, second.
On the question.
Now the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Do you want me to, oh, yes. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion, D two, to remove the permanent closure of Bancroft Elementary at the end of the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second that motion.
You'd also need to move the next one as well.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
There's other references to Bancroft.
Oh, yes, and, and the grade K through four Bancroft Elementary students.
And the grade five.
Okay.
And grade five.
And grade five Bancroft students moving to Northeast.
Well, that, again, I just, be careful.
That would stand.
Yes, sorry, if you're, again, Director Dempsey, I'm not telling you what to say, but I need to clarify.
Grade five, I think is a separate, for me, that's a separate thing than.
Well, again, grade five would be, is also considered with Armstrong and Adams, so that would be part, that would be part of that plan to move the fifth grade to Northeast and to South. But I'm just explaining, you have to decide what you want.
Absolutely. I am actually, I'm fine with moving, I don't have, my friendly amendment is simply reg- regarding the closure of Bancroft Elementary and the moving of the K through four Bancroft students to Trip.
I, I'll second that.
You're seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. On the question of the friendly amendment to remove the permanent closure of Bancroft and the moving of the K through four, four Bancroft Elementary students to Isaac Trip Elementary.
On the question, so with this friendly amendment, is it something that I can say I'd like, because essentially it's, I just wanted another, more time to understand these acronyms, to understand the pricing breakdown regarding Bancroft. And so is that then the friendly amendment, because there are caveat in there to say, to put on the agenda for the next?
I, I think it automatically does.
It automatically does, thank you.
When you ta, yeah, when you table, when you ask for a table, it goes to the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hump.
On the, on the question, I feel like I'm making things more difficult rather, and that's always something I try to avoid, but if I heard Mr. Fazil correctly, it sounds like we have some concerns, even with the stopgap measures of getting kids back into Bancroft, we have some issues with doing that until January.
Correct.
So I don't know if we really should remove the part about Bancroft Elementary students going to Isaac Trip, if you see what I mean. Am I just making things awful? I'm sorry.
No, no, you're correct. So we, according to PDE, we have to notify them and the board has to vote if we are moving students. So right now, the vote was to have those students there until the end of the school year. So if this was the case and this is tabled and we move forward, we need, we would need another vote, depending on the next vote, we would need another vote. If Bancroft does not close, we would need another vote that states that they would stay in that building. Because right now, we're moving kids that are still considered a Bancroft school because they have their own AUN number. So I don't mean to be confusing either, but yes, depending on how the next vote goes, we'll, we might need another vote. But as of right now, we have a vote that's, that we've submitted to PDE that says that our students from Bancroft are located at Trip for right now.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I was clear. But yes, you are, you, that's, you brought up a very good point, because if we can't get the kids into January, we don't want it to run into a situation that our northeast students were in, where we have to, you know, we don't, we have to displace them. So yes, you're, you're exactly right.
Agreed, thanks.
Thank you.
They would, they would in fact have to move there anyway, would they not? Because we can't get them in at least until January, probably at the earliest?
That is correct. Oh, that's what we were told tonight, yes.
And, and I do understand that, I'm just asking for time to, to understand this. I, I just, that's what this is, asking for a little bit more time. I'm not saying that this is the be-all, end-all to destroy the plan, I'm just asking for a little more time.
We are fine timewise, timeline-wise, if this was to pass, to bring this up the next meeting, we are okay timeline-wise, correct, for when things need to be submitted in some areas?
Well, we're fine as far as the timeline to submitting to PDE.
I believe July 1st is the PDE deadline.
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have an obligation of a notice to employees per the CBA, so that we're, that we are under that also, but as far as PDE, yes, we have a, I believe the date is July 1.
Anything else on the question for the friendly amendment? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
I, I'm, what are we voting now, though? Just so I understand.
We are voting on the friendly amendment to remove the closure of Bancroft, and I believe we are leaving the, we are also removing the grade K through four Bancroft Elementary students attending Trip, and it would require an additional vote if Bancroft, if that vote does not, is not approved.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
No.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
No.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
No.
Six affirmative, three negative, motion passed. So now on the original motion, which will be to move the Whittier Annex grade four students to the Whittier Main Building. The grade five students from Armstrong, Adams, Bancroft, Robert Morris, Prescott, and Whittier based on address would attend Northeast Scranton Intermediate School, and grade five students from Kennedy, McNichols Plaza, and Whittier based on address would attend South Scranton Intermediate School. On the question of the original motion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr. Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Nine affirmative. D three, we will have a motion to appoint the following members to the reopening Educational Advisory Committee. Elementary parents, Jack Schalk and Megan Nowakowski. Secondary parents, Matt Barrett and Bridget Frownfelter. Special education parents, Roseanne Polish and Vivian Williams. Special education teacher, Ashley Richards. Also serving will be the Director of Elementary Education, Ann Grebek, the Director of Secondary Education, Paul Doherty, the Director of Special Education, Dr. Sharon Batic. The Education Committee designee will be Director Sarah Cruz, the Special Education Committee designee will be Director Roe Hume, and serving ex officio will be Burke Gentileza, pandemic coordinator, Melissa Daly, head school nurse, myself as president, and Superintendent McTernan. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I am very excited to be working on this committee, and I would like to suggest that if, as I assume we will, we appoint this committee, we contact the members to schedule a meeting for next week and to ascertain whether evenings or afternoons or early mornings suit them better, but I believe that the quicker this committee can meet and start its work and also designate the, the different, I suspect, subcommittees, the better it will be. And by the way, Superintendent McTernan, I did not get to thank you for your stated commitment earlier this evening to full reopening in September, because I think there isn't a person in Scranton who doesn't back the administration on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just thank you to everyone who stepped up and put their name in, I, I appreciate that.
On the question, I'm also happy to serve on this committee. Also, there were advertisements for other positions that were not filled, so are we able to re-advertise the positions that were unfilled, specifically the mental health counselor, which I feel is very much needed as we move out of the pandemic for our students, they're really in need of.
I would suggest that that's something you bring to that committee and come back to us.
Okay.
With a proposal, and I think we would want to seek Mr. Addy's advice from a procedural standpoint, because we did publicize this and did not receive any responses, but I'm, I'm certain there's a way to rectify that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I think we could go all in favor for this one. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. E one, we will have a motion to approve the spring contract with Lackawanna College for the time period Sunday, March 14th, 2021, through Saturday, March 20th, 2021, Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, through Thursday, May 6th, 2021, Saturday, April 1st, 2021, and Saturday, May 1st, 2021, for the use of Memorial Stadium, Stadium for their football practices and scheduled games. The fee scheduled, seven-day practices at a rate of $250 per practice plus maintenance fees, 23 weekday practices at a rate of $250 per practice plus maintenance fees, two home games at a fee of $2,500 for day games and $3,300 for night games, $12,500 will be due to the district plus maintenance fees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Am I supposed to remove myself from this since it's my place of employment?
That's probably not a bad idea, Mr. Addy.
I'm still hearing what you said.
No, that's because she was whispering over here.
I'm sorry, am I to remove myself from the vote because it's my place of employment?
Yes, that would make sense.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Stand.
Epstein. Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Eight affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
E two, we will have a motion to approve the contract agreement with Riverfront Sports Complex effective March 2nd, 2021, through May 2nd, 2021, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E three, we will have a motion to approve the construction contract for the Francis Willard Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to Dunmore Roofing and Supply Company, Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $362,200, subject to proper execution of the contract, insurance, and bonding as required in the contract documents. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E five, we will have a motion to approve the construction contract for Memorial Stadium Track Renovations Project to Astroturf Corporation, at a cost not to exceed $584,179.60, subject to proper execution of the contract, insurance, and bonding as required in the contract documents. May I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E four, we will have a motion to approve the construction contract for the environmental abatement construction bid for the Northeast Intermediate School Environmental Abatement Project to Like Homing Supply, Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $167,089, subject to proper execution of the contract, insurance, and bonding as required in the contract documents. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E seven, we will have a motion to approve the construction contract for the mechanical construction bid for the Northeast Intermediate School Ventilation Upgrades Project to Myco Mechanical, Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $1,315. Three, no.
No.
Pardon me, $1,315,000, subject to proper execution of the contract, insurance, and bonding as required in the contract documents. This award is also subject to Myco Mechanical, Incorporated, obtaining a master mechanical license in the city of Scranton by May 14th, 2021. If not obtained, the project will be awarded to Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling at a cost not to exceed $1,387,105. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so this is potentially getting awarded to somebody not licensed in the city? Is that the issue?
This is, can someone speak, I don't want to misspeak on this, this is a specific license?
I'm sorry.
The, Missy, do you want to, the license for Myco?
Yeah.
I just, I mean, I have notes here, I just don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, I mean, the specific license itself, we were just, we were informed today that this company, there's a specific license that is unique to the city of Scranton. This company that is the lowest bidder does not have that certification, but is going to be, it's a test. And so there's an individual, or two individuals that are going to be sit, sitting to take that test. If they pass that test, then they get their certificate, and then they would be the lowest bidder that would be afforded the, this job. The motion is written that if they don't pass the test, then it would go to the second lowest bidder. So again, in speaking with Dewey today, this certification for Scranton is very unique. I think they were kind of off guard, and I need to note that the qualifications that were put, put, when they put out the bid specs was not, did not include the certification because it is unique to Scranton. So that is why they are being allowed to go and pursue this certification, and if they pass the certification, then they would get the job. I hope I explained that.
Yes, I think you did. And International Code Council is what I have written here as the certification they will be seeking, or the governing body of the certification.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have that specific, yeah, the ICC, I do, right, yes. Is there any other questions on that? Because we were just informed of that today, and that's what, the information we were given.
Anyone else? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E nine, we will have a motion to approve the attached amendment to the agreement for services for Scranton School District Owners Representative Services. This will amend the scope of the services of the owners representative services to be rendered on behalf of the owner to include design and construction administration of miscellaneous facilities projects. The fee for design of miscellaneous facilities projects in accordance with the scope for additional services as outlined in this amendment. If the project as a whole is rejected, fees will be based on the most current estimate or bid result, including add altern, all, add alternates. The project fee for construction cost, up to $100,000, the base fee is $4,000, and 8.5% percentage of estimated construction cost for design fee, and the percentage of estimated construction cost for construction administration is 4%. Between $101,000 and $599,999, that base fee is 2,500, the percentages remain the same. And over $600,000, there is no base fee. The percentages drop to 7.5% for construction cost for fee design, and 2% construction cost for construction administration. May I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
F one, we will have a motion to approve the personnel report as attached.
Has, excuse me, Director Good Martin, has E ten been removed?
I'm sorry, this was sticking. Did I miss something?
E ten, which is the executive, the fight for that's Memorial Day annual rock march.
Uh, that was moved to consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, okay, thank you. I could never keep up with all the agendas. Sorry.
Yes, that is on consent agenda, so we're all.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. So back to F one, we will have a motion to, we still have a motion to approve the personnel report as attached.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Oh, yes, on the question, I'd like to thank, I'd like to congratulate the new hires and appointees, and thank those who are leaving us for their years of service and dedication to the students of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
H four, we will have a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit 23 Intergovernmental Agreement for Shared Services as per the attached. May I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Do we have any new business this evening? As of the item we will add to the work session agenda, we have a note of that. Since there is no new business, I would thank everyone for joining us this evening. It was certainly.
Do we need a reef still?
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Fazil, you've been there so quietly and patiently, I didn't even realize you were still on the call. So thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, and thanks for getting all the projects approved there. We'll, we'll get right on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye.
Ginny, did we have any written comment?
I do have not, I do not have any written comments.
Wow.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, everyone, for bearing with our technology glitches, although they were minimal, I think, and participating in the social distancing and COVID protocols. I think this went pretty well this evening. So thank you all for being with us tonight, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.